But just so you know.
I guess we should have done this differently. You and I didn't talk about that. Anyway, let's call the meeting to order. I'll break all the rules tonight. Good evening, folks. Evening, folks. It's March 17th. Happy St. Patrick's Day 2016. It is five minutes after seven o'clock. This is the New Market School Board. I'd invite everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Given that this is the reorganization meeting of the board following the election, I shouldn't have done any of the stuff I just did. I'll hand it off to the Superintendent of Schools. Ask him to please lead us in reorganizing tonight.
I would like to call for nomination for School Board Chair for the 2016-2017 year.
I nominate Nathan Lenny.
Second.
We have a nomination by Elizabeth and a second by Michael Kennison and Al Zink. They were tied. Seeing nothing else, I'll call for your vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The vote was unanimous. Congratulations, Nathan. The meeting is all yours, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. I appreciate that. Not looking like all those volunteers stand still. The rest of us will step into the other room. We need a vice chair for this year, and so I would ask for nominations for vice chair of the board.
I nominated Elizabeth McKinney as vice chair.
I second that.
Excellent. Are there any nominations other than Ms. McKinney? Hearing none? Closed nominations. I ask for all of our votes on Elizabeth McKinney to serve another year as vice chair of the school board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then we're unanimous. I have a couple of quick things then for our meeting as we launch tonight.
Could I just make a comment?
Yes, please.
I think we've got a really good team going here. My only reservation is we've been leaning on both you guys very heavily. And it's going to continue for whatever period of time. And so I just hope you'll lean on us. I'm surprised both of you accepted. But, and I don't mean that in jest. I mean that sincerely. I think it's been a great year, but it's been a tough one, especially for you two guys. So thank you for doing it.
It's been much nicer working. It's easy when you have a board that functions together and works as a team. So I appreciate everything that we've all been doing.
Hey, listen. I appreciate your support. You know, you can't do anything without a great team. And I'll take the opportunity, because you've set me up perfectly, to say I apologize to the board and any elements of the community that are still waiting on things that land on my desk and sit, because it's tough to do a lot. There's some things that you'll cover tonight before we're done where we just have to take me out of the loop and keep going so that this process doesn't stop waiting for me to, you know, to pick a day or pick a time or do something like that. You guys just have to forge ahead. So thank you for the comments, Al, because it has been a busy year. And I surely don't want to be, I don't want to be guilty of keeping us from moving forward on any front. So having said that, first item for review tonight or for discussion was to take a moment and review the 2016 voting results. And I, the board, I think, we've probably had comments, we've shared comments about this individually. What we have now is we have another, at least two years, where you four people, and I have one year left and then another election, but the four of you are here for two solid board years, which is an outstanding opportunity for consistency for a well-functioning group to be able to make all of the strides that we need to make. And I think I can speak for all of us when I say thank you, thank you very much to the community for what was a very supportive vote. Honestly, we didn't see as many voters at the polls on the eighth day of March as we might have. I think there were somewhere in the order, on the order of 700 and change, 733 voters who came. And obviously, in a community of somewhat 9,000 maybe residents that we have, it'd be great to see that number, it'd be more like 7,000, but that's not what we see in this society right now. So thank you to all of those who took the time to come out. And thank you for a very supportive vote on the school's ballot. We will move ahead with a budget that was, as we designed it. We'll move ahead on all fronts. I know that our teachers are pleased that their contract was ratified through the vote. And we have just this evening signed off on that agreement so that the teachers can do the same, the teachers negotiating team, and that can be forwarded to the Public Employee Labor Relations Board and become part of the state's, you know, documentation. So thank you very much to the public for that support. And off we go. I have a couple of items. We have signed the MS-22 already tonight as we sat down. The MS-22 represents the summary of the money articles that are voted at the ballot. And at the end of this process, the district has to send that along to the state to verify. So we've just done that. The agenda we're working from is the revised agenda because there was a personnel matter that has to be addressed before the night's out. There's one more item I'd ask the board to entertain. We can do it right now on the agenda if you don't mind. And then, oh, I was going to say earlier, I can't stay with us all night. I've got another commitment tonight. And I apologize, I wasn't able to adjust that, but I have a family commitment. And so I'm going to excuse myself before we get too deep into the agenda. Thank you.
Got to make a motion to remove Nate as chair.
Thank you for trusting. Thank you for trusting me as chair. I'm going home. Bye-bye. So...
I'm making a motion to a point.
But I told Elizabeth that was coming so that it wouldn't catch her off guard when I packed my bags and walked out. So the thing that isn't on the agenda that I'd like us to just discuss briefly, and I don't want to steal Christine's thunder, but we need to, we need a vote of the board to move forward with securing our property liability insurance for the new year. We are currently with PLT. So there's two risk pools. So not Liberty Mutual or not a commercial insurance company, but there are two risk pools in the state that serve cities, towns, counties, and school districts. One of them is Property and Liability Trust of New Hampshire, with whom we've been working now for a number of years. The other is Primex. Both are based in Concord and both have a pretty diverse smattering of, as I said, town, cities, schools, et cetera. PLT that we're with is getting out of the business at June 30. And so we have engaged Primex to provide our property liability coverage moving forward. But I know Christine needs a vote of the board in order to act. And so if you have any questions about that, I know I asked, I asked when she brought it to my attention, I asked if Primex is going to fit within the budgeted amount? And the answer was yes, comfortably, with room to spare. So obviously, we're making a transition that is agreeable to our budget and our plan, which is good. And we don't jump out and look at commercial firms because the level of coverage and the support that they give to things like special ed hearings and due process and the legal arguments that come out of the realm of special education are not things that are well-supported and well-understood in the commercial market. But the pools are built around this to help us. So are there any other questions about that that you might want to direct to Christine before I ask the board to support moving forward with Primex for next year? Hearing none tonight. You tell me, the language of the motion, is it simple? You simply need the board to...
Just authorize to transact a contract.
A contract with Primex for next year?
For next year. Effective July 1.
Could I get a motion to that effect, then?
I move that we move our property and liability contract to Primex starting July 1.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? On a motion from Ms. Shelton, then, a second from Ms. McKinney, all those in favor of moving to Primex for P and L insurance as of July 1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then we're unanimous. Thank you, folks. Everything else, I think, is in the agenda. I open up to public comment if there are residents who desire to speak. So we've changed our policies to speak to just that point, given, you have something important to share? I'm just kidding. Is it the pleasure of the board that we'd entertain Pat Ballantyne, our Director of Critical Instruction?
Yes.
It's the consensus of the board, Pat, please. Yep.
One of the first, two things. Most parents know that tomorrow's a whole day off for students. I have all staff here, paraprofessionals. Everybody's here tomorrow, starting at 7:30, for a light continental breakfast. And then we do our annual New Market University in the morning, which is really a lot of fun for everybody. That's when all of my teachers or paras take on teaching other people in the district. So we might have a para teaching math strategies that they've learned from a workshop or they've been trying out. We have an outside consultant coming in to do some work. We have a lot of technology workshops going on. That will take place all morning. Every person got to choose, usually four, unless you hit a big workshop that had two sessions you had to go to. So that takes place in the morning. And then both buildings kind of change up after lunch. We have team building going on at the junior, senior high school and at the elementary school. We have a combination of grade-level teams and continued work on website development and Google Read and Write. The other part, unfortunately, has come to light is that it might snow on the first day of spring. If you recall, one of the snow days that we called, we had difficulty getting everyone notified. So what I'm asking parents to do is to remember that we do use Channel 9, social media, other kinds of access. If you don't get a phone call or if you look out the window and there's, I hope not, seven inches of snow, you have to think about finding another source. Unless, I think the phone call system has been fixed, but there were seven school districts that weren't, couldn't use Blackboard that morning. So we were really late in getting everybody notified. A lot of phone calls to people and staff that don't work in town. We have a lot of teachers who work, who live in Massachusetts, and we had to be on the phone, like, real quick. So that's just my updating, you know, a reminder that we use radios. And that's on the website as well. And Channel 9 WMUR is also bright and early. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
And what you're not saying is that she, Sean Pine, Chris, were here making those phone calls to make sure that...
Everybody got notified.
Which we appreciate immensely.
I was glad no one came in. I was still in the slippers kind of phase. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's awesome. Thank you. Anything else that, anyone else for public comment tonight? Then I would ask us to dig into the packet. There are three out-of-state field trip requests. By board policy, the board must act on requests to take field trips out of state or overnight. The first of these in the packet is a request from New Market Elementary Kindergarten. Mrs. Potier's class, oh, actually, three classes. Kalinsky, Potier, and Reiden are going to, or would like to go to the New England Aquarium here later this month. Paperwork was all in order. NES kindergarten going to the New England Aquarium. They've linked it even to national standards in their curriculum in the kindergarten. And so I would seek a vote of the board to approve their request to go to the New England Aquarium.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or concerns folks had with that request? Hearing none, I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Mr. Kennison. All those in favor of approving kindergarten trip to the New England Aquarium, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then we're unanimous. Second in the packet is also from kindergarten. This is Mrs. Lazarus's class. Ms. Lazarus is taking the class to the Children's Museum in Boston. They're going on the same day later this month. My review said that everything seemed to be in order. I seek a motion to approve Ms. Lazarus's request to go to the Boston Children's Museum.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any other questions?
Do they take the same bus, it's on the same day? Are they all going on the same bus? Do we know?
I think they take a...
Two separate buses?
So we all take a separate bus because it's, the road goes that way?
For what it's worth, I see PTA support for that bus. And we appreciate the PTA and the work they do raising funds to help offset some of the costs related to our extended curriculum opportunities like field trips. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, I have a motion from Mr. Kennison, a second from Ms. McKinney to approve request of kindergarten to visit the Boston Children's Museum. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then we're unanimous. The last field trip request that's before us is Mr. Webb's fifth grade class. He's headed to Boston. I believe they're, I got to go back and look. Freedom Trail, right. It's all about the American Revolution. These are, these are very traditional in terms of the schedule. And so we appreciate them bringing them to our attention. Seek a motion to approve Mr. Webb's fifth grade class request.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
I chaperoned one of these for my daughter a couple of years ago. I mean, I think I learned more in one day than I have in a while. It was great. It's great that Mr. Webb is doing this and...
Outstanding.
Great trip.
I volunteer for, it's called Vintage and Vine at Strawberry Bank. And they have this big fundraiser so they can have, they pay for buses for people in the state to come because some kids don't get to go on field trips. So it's nice that our school allows us to happen. The PTA gives them money. Because some kids don't leave the state. So it is a nice opportunity for all of them.
I have only good things to say, although when they took me to the nut farm, and I got there with all great expectation and it had nothing to do with nuts, and we were milking goats. I was more than a little bit miffed because I thought I was going, I'm a big nut fan, and I thought I was going to a nut farm. I'm not sure what I expected out of a nut farm, but I didn't expect candles and butter and soap and everything made from goat milk. Goats jumping up and down and bouncing all over the place and little droppings all over. And so I, my kids definitely took advantage of me that day, that's for sure.
I'd just like to make a comment. The, on several of these applications, they're incomplete. Talking about nurse notified CPR person and so forth. If those are important issues, no one, I'd like to see them on there. If they're not, then let's take them off.
Take them off the form.
Yeah. It would seem to me that...
That particular...
CPR, first aid, certified chaperone is required. For example, that seems like an important one. And on a couple cases, it's not even identified, so...
And when they put the paperwork together, the principal, you would come, you have an answer? Great.
Al, that form that you have, any of those forms for field trips, go back to the school and the nurse the day of, day before and the day of the field trip she goes through. She takes a medical bag for every kid that's going to need that kind of, if there's medication necessary. That field trip does not leave unless there is a CPR person on the bus.
And I understand that, but if the board...
She checks it off as she goes through to make sure that she's done it.
The board is giving approval. This should be complete.
I don't think she knows who it is until then.
So I think what Al's saying, maybe we don't need that, we don't need to see it then?
Maybe we take it off, but she, I think she needs to have it on the form. But I'll speak with her.
Yep.
Or maybe there could be a note that says, "To be determined", and right before the, 24 hours before the trip or something like that.
She goes through and checks on, especially who's going and who is the CPR person that's going. Because they can't leave the yard.
Well, and we might, what we might need is we might need a different summary form that comes forward to the board that meets our policy and doesn't necessarily specify everything that they use as an internal control.
Okay. That's a good idea. No, I'll, we'll look at that. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Any other discussion? I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Ms. Shelton. All those in favor of approving the fifth grade trip to Boston, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We are unanimous. Before your presentation about the position of transition coordinator, we'd love to wrap up the conversation about Unified Sports, the program that was presented last meeting. I know there were some questions asked about space here and there.
Having spoken with Jamie Hayes and Larry Avril over at Epping, it was determined that they would, they would communicate to find practice space from week to week. It's one practice day a week and then the games. There's enough space between the two schools that they could find a, they could carve out a corner to make that work. So I don't think it's going to be an issue.
So the two ADs have essentially weighed in and said they're confident that they can support, they can support this if the board does.
Absolutely.
So Unified Sports Program, three sports, soccer, basketball, and, do you remember?
Track.
Track, thank you. Was on our agenda and we discussed it at our last meeting. I know that they, the Epping School Board considered this recently and has approved it. They're waiting on our participation. And so I put it to the board. Given the information from the athletic directors, is there the desire of the board to go ahead and accept this program?
Yes.
I seek a motion to approve the plan to move forward with the Unified Sports Program with Epping High School.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, although I have a motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Ms. McKinney. All those in favor of launching the Unified Sports Program in tandem with Epping High School, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous and we thank you very much.
And it's a great, it's going to be a great opportunity for the kids to get community hours as well.
Hey, so the timing of this works beautifully because as the lights dim and you begin to present, I will sneak out. Not because I, not because I lack in any way, shape, or form interest in this, because I've been through the materials and I'm psyched. And I appreciate you coming. This is Ryan LaVassar, Transition Coordinator at New Market Junior Senior High. And I'll hand it over to you and to you. Guys, thank you very much for your patience.
Oh, yeah. I'll be well behaved.
Oh, I don't want them off. That's okay. So my name is Ryan LaVassar. I'm the School Career Transition Coordinator at the junior, senior high school. Today, I'd like to talk with you about the transition services we provide. We provide all of our students in my role as the transition coordinator. First off, I've got to say that I think I have the coolest job. I didn't go out seeking a job like this. And to have it become available has been such an awesome opportunity. So I have to thank the district for that opportunity. So what are transition services? Okay. Transition services are activities to prepare students with disabilities to move from school to post-school life. Now, most transition coordinators and most transition services in public schools are extended primarily to students with disabilities. New Market has provided me with the opportunity to extend those opportunities to all of our students, which is just an awesome experience. The activities must be based on students' needs, their preferences and their interests. And they should, they'll include needed activities in the following areas. Those are instruction, related services, community experiences, development of employment and other post-school adult living objectives, acquisition of daily living skills when appropriate, and functional locational evaluations. Transition goals are student-centered. I ought to stress that. It's their hopes, it's their dreams, and it's their goals. So it's all based around the student. All students aged 15 to 21 are required to have a transition plan in their IEP. Okay? I'm responsible for meeting with the team, which includes the student, to develop an appropriate student-centered plan. Okay? I meet with special education case managers to ensure that transition goals are tied to the goals and are therefore in compliance with Indicator 13. Indicator 13 is part of the state performance plan and it's reported to the Fed. A couple of years ago, before I was here, New Market was 100% in compliance, which is excellent. So I've got great examples to follow as I move forward in this position. So once the goals are written, they're met through a variety of work-based learning opportunities. Okay? Those include job shadows, internships, extended learning opportunities, informational interviews, career-oriented field trips. Job shadows allow students of all abilities to get a more in-depth look at a career field which they have an interest in. Students spend a day or a partial day on the job site following a specific department or several departments, time willing. So for example, a job shadow at the med tech lab at one with Douglas Hospital, the student would show up at nine o'clock in the morning, observe a blood draw, and then follow that blood until noon as they go through the different departments and it's analyzed. And I've had several students actually go through that or are going to it. A job shadow at Lighthouse Manufacturing in Portsmouth, they'll do a tour of the facility so students can get an idea of what it's like to be in that working environment. And they'll settle in with a specific department, whether it be welding, computer-assisted design, or computer numerical cutting. And they'll actually get some hands-on experience, be able to watch it firsthand, which is really cool. Internships allow students to observe and participate in an area of interest. So it's not just a one-day thing. It lasts the semester or even the year. Students attend the job site one to three days a week and become part of the setting. Their internships, this year internships took place in the fields of elementary and middle school education, automotive technology, and culinary arts. I've also been working closely with the University of New Hampshire's Interoperability Lab to come up with ways to better promote their paid and unpaid internships. They have a paid summer internship, which is available to our students, which we've been, which we've been talking about. And I've provided some documentation on that. Extended learning opportunities, like internships, are an opportunity for students to learn a valuable skill in a career area of interest while earning high school credit. These are typically handled by guidance, but I've included them here because they are a transitional service. They allow students to acquire knowledge outside of the traditional classroom. The process begins with the student, a mentor in the field of interest, and an advisor, who would be a highly qualified teacher, agreeing on a project that meets predetermined state standards. The student, under the guidance of their mentor and the frequent advisor check-ins, so they might write a weekly reflection or other assignments that have been discussed, they'll complete those tasks and demonstrate for their team the knowledge they attained. So they'll do a presentation at the end to that group. Informational interviews. Some of the, some of the career fields that students come to me with, I can't imagine having a job shadow just for the sake of time or safety or privacy, for that matter. So the informational interview allows students to get an insider point of view of that career field. Okay? Students prepare for the interview by researching the job and developing questions that are going to ask this professional. Once they've completed the, sorry. Informational, informational interviews this year have been completed in the fields of law enforcement, aviation, music journalism, tattooing, health sciences, and psychology and retail. Career-oriented field trips are kind of the broadest, the broadest one. Students that are unsure which career path they're going to take benefit from exposure to a variety of different career fields. So by using Naviance or gathering information from student conversations, I can get a sense of the kind of career students are interested in and can develop field trips for those specific, specific fields. Over the course of the year, we've had field trips at Lighthouse Manufacturing, New Market Police Department. We went to a working farm, the Advanced Technologies and Academic Center in Rochester, and New Hampshire Construction Career Days at the beginning of the year. Okay. So these are the, these are the kinds of work-based learning opportunities students have participated in this year. So it's been a pretty diverse group. And I'm hoping that continues to diversify while I'm here. So a primary concern for the special education population is independence after, after high school. So, a primary concern for the special education population is independence after, after high school, okay? So I, I'm starting to do some transportation training and that would involve, um, helping, helping students being able to, to use a bus schedule or manage unexpected changes, uh, demonstrate expected behavior on, on the bus and, and navigate the diverse social network that exists in public transportation. Cause there's a lot of, a lot of things that can happen, a lot of variables, so. So I meet with a student who, who might not have a license or has not been cleared to drive. Uh, we might discuss their post-secondary goals, whether that be a job, taking part in the community, uh, or getting, even getting together with friends, okay? And I try to use that as a way to sell them on the idea of using public transportation, cause it's not always, it's not something they're always very excited about. So once we've discussed some potential destinations, uh, we look at the bus schedule and discuss a timeline. When do we leave school to get to the bus? Uh, do we need to change buses? How much time will we have once we arrive at the destination? When do we need to get back to the bus to make it back to school, okay? Once the student is comfortable riding the bus, they'll do a solo ride in which I take them to the bus, at a time that they determine. And ensure that they get on the bus. And then I'll follow them to that location, okay? Uh, and they have the ability to contact me if an issue arises and I can pick them up. So, my, my number forwards to my cellphone. It's, uh, it's been, it's been successful. It's been very, very fun. Vocational skills training. While vocational skills for specific careers are certainly covered in all of the other work-based learning opportunities I've discussed, I specifically focus on soft job skills, like time management, workplace communication, uh, being able to work with a team, um, and the ability to take and learn from constructive criticism. Those are things that we get taught at school, uh, but that some students don't generalize to the workplace. So it's, I, I think it's important that they have the opportunity to learn in, in a work setting. And through partnerships with Sunrise Sunset Senior Center, McGregor Memorial EMS in Durham, uh, the Interoperability, Interoperability Lab at U N H, New Market Elementary School, Ways Meat Cornucopia Food Pantry, uh, the Child Study and Development Center at U N H, and the Field House at U N H, uh, New Market students have had the opportunity to develop these skills in a setting that better simulates a work environment. Okay? Some of the, this is actually, this, this part is, is really cool. Some of the vocational skills training, um, is provided by U N, U N H students taking E D U C five-five-six. Um, that's mentoring adolescents with disabilities. During the semester-long program, New Market students are paired with a college-age mentor at a job site. I work with the site, the student, and the U N H mentor develop a list of tasks that need to be completed on the site. Uh, and the mentors given, uh, the mentors given access to the student's I E P so they can get a better look at, um, what to expect, how they learn best, okay? And they meet on a weekly basis on the job site and they complete those tasks. In addition to developing those soft job skills though, uh, they get to make a connection with someone who isn't quite a peer but is much easier to connect with than a teacher. And they get, it's, it's like a peer, it's like a, they're like models, um, for these students. So while it is a working relationship, um, the New Market students have an opportunity to ask questions about the college experience and, and, and to get an idea of what, what to expect in the future. Additionally, I work with students to develop strategies and skills for filling out applications, uh, building resumes, and developing interview skills through mock interviews. I, so students who attend Seco School of Technology during their senior year are met with a, a challenge of trying to fit senior seminar, uh, which is a graduation requirement, into their schedule. So I've developed and facilitate a version of the course that they can take online through Google Classrooms. And that's, it's not just online, it's in conjunction with, um, we meet every other day from two fifteen to two thirty, as a check-in to see where they're at. Uh, the course covers job interview skills, resume building, goal-setting, and, uh, student-led current event discussions, as well as lessons in personal finance, so. Let's see. So moving forward, I recently met with Brendan Jorgensen, the, the president of the New Market Business Association. Uh, our hope is to kind of strengthen the relationship between the school and the area businesses. While I've connected with some local businesses regarding work-based learning opportunities, I feel that this would be a way to maintain regular contact with a larger number of these businesses. And when it comes time to organize a career fair next year, which is on the, which is on the plate, uh, I feel like these relationships, uh, will ease that process, for sure, so. Let's see. The career fair would be yet another way to expose students to a variety of options, uh, some they're already interested in, some they may not even know, uh, existed. So it would also be a good way to gather data on which companies, uh, or career students gravitate towards. So when it comes time to do job shadows, uh, career-oriented field trips, setting up extended learning opportunities, those connections have already been made, so. Lastly, technology workshops at U N H through the I O L. Um, I applied for an N C E P grant, uh, in February for funds to send students to a variety of programming and technology workshops. Uh, and that was, that was, uh, approved, so. Um, we have funds to send five students to these, to these programs at U N H. They meet, uh, twice a week after school for, um, for four weeks. They typically cost a hundred fifty dollars. So right now, there are no, there are no workshops on the calendar, um, but I'll be meeting with, with the I O L to kind of figure out what our students need and what they can provide. So it's gonna be a pretty, a pretty awesome partnership, I think. And lastly, Unified Sports, which, which we've discussed, I don't know if we need to, to dig into that again, but it's, I, I can't thank you enough for the opportunity there. It's gonna be great. Uh, so thank you so much for giving me the time to speak tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
State of New Hampshire doesn't have a VoC rehab or anything like that?
We do have VoC rehab.
We do have a VoC rehab?
Yep.
So do they, do they VoC with a job?
To a degree. Um, they start working with students their junior year. So, um, a student will be introduced to VoC rehab during their junior year and they'll start to, um, work with them on job shadows outside of school. And also develop an individualized plan for employment, um, that carries over after they, they leave our system. So, um, it's an extension of what we do, yeah.
Ryan, thank you for sharing this information with us.
Thank you so much for the time, there's a lot of.
I didn't know the majority of what you said and what we've read today, so I appreciate that. And I like to focus on the whole student and the specific things for the individual students, so thank you for your dedication and hard work in that area.
I have a couple, couple questions.
Sure.
You couldn't find a stronger supporter than me for this whole transitional effort. And that's supposed to be what we're all about as an educator. If, uh, this, how many, uh, what percent of the special ed students participate in this transitional work?
Well, they, they would all be participating. Every, yeah.
Anyone that has an I E P?
Anyone aged fifteen to twenty-one with an I E P, yeah.
And non-special ed, what would be your guess as to how many of the non-special ed students participate?
That's trickier to connect, cause it's, I could get back to you with that. I don't have a number off the top of my head, but it's.
I'm just, I'm just curious because if that number is of any significance, it's almost a, a Herculean task to be able to respond
So.
to all, the, the whole population?
It, it's, uh, it's an exercise in time management, um, but it, um, uh, Kath, Catherine McGilvery, uh, teaches civics and economics. And part of her, uh, program is to get students to complete job shadows and informational interviews. So during their junior year, they actually have the opportunity to do the two, um, graduation, the two job shadows that are graduation requirements as part of her class. So I'll go into her class and meet with those students. Um, some of them come to me and some of them don't. Some of them set them up on their own. But if they don't, if they're interested in a career field that a family member isn't connected to or they don't have a way, a way in, I kind of play the middleman and ensure that that gets scheduled and set up.
So is it, walk me through this a little bit.
You got it.
So I'm, I'm a senior and I'm interested in aviation. And I come to New Market and I say, help me out.
Okay.
What happens?
Okay, so aviation, obviously really tough to get you on a plane and job shadow a pilot, right? But, um, uh, my friend John Kotrick, uh, he's a former marine pilot and he now flies for American Airlines. Uh, he actually came in and, and, and did an informational interview for a civic student, um, to discuss, you know, life as a marine pilot, because the student was interested in both. Uh, life as a marine pilot and then what it's like once you're out and getting into, um, just flying planes commercially. So, the, the, the hands-on aspect of that is trickier. But there are ways for students to get access to professionals, um, that have experience and kind of speak to what that life is like.
And would they, is, is that part of your responsibility to be, is that the first person? Let me pick it, that was a terrible one. It's like, I wanna be a space astronaut. Help me here, uh.
Welding.
No, cause that's vocational, that's easy.
Okay.
Huh?
Police.
Easy.
Psychiatrist.
Okay, there you go.
You got it, okay. Um, working on a psychology one now, actually. Uh, that would also end up being an informational interview, uh, because of the HIPAA, the HIPAA piece.
Right, and I, I'm interested in learning, in furthering my education in psychology.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna go to college, obviously, to, to do that. And is it you that I go to and say, hey, I'm interested in psychology, what do I do next?
I'd be an option, yes.
Who else would they go to?
I would say maybe Tom Pavlidis in guidance because, for the college piece. Because I have less connection to the college piece when it's not, when it's not career-centered. So if we're talking about going to ATAC in Rochester for, um,
Gotcha.
for, uh, composites or Great Bay Program for welding or something like that.
Gotcha, okay.
And then the Naviance piece, when, when the guidance really goes through what the areas of interest are and how to direct them and what schools to go to. So it's sort of, that is covered in there.
Right.
Okay.
That, that's a tool I'm still, I'm still navigating, but it's, it's just a wealth of information, so.
Like, it's beginning to make sense, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, um, tonight is the National Honor Society's annual game show night, so that's currently going on right now. There's gonna be no school tomorrow, as someone has previously mentioned. And in sports, track, softball, and baseball all begin their practices on Monday. The juniors took the Accuplacer test this week. It was split up, so not everyone would be out of class at the same time, so. College Day was on Wednesday and I think it went over really well. We had a lot of alumni coming back from last year who had gone to college. The eighth grade penny sale is going to be on Saturday and the doors open at four P M. And the juniors will be providing the food. And the high school drama club's spring production of The Butler Did It is taking place on April first at seven o'clock and April second at twelve o'clock and at seven o'clock.
And the penny sale is to benefit the Philadelphia trip?
Yes.
And there are prizes?
Yeah.
Okay, so they open up, the, the doors open at four, drawings begin at six. It's a fun time for all.
What are the dates of the play again?
Uh, April first and second. Uh, the first has a production at seven o'clock and the second has one at twelve and at seven, so.
Any questions for Ms. Julia?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to facilities.
Facilities, well, thanks again for everybody who came out and voted. We appreciate all that and, uh, got some good feedback on the video that, that was put out. A lot of people apparently looked at that. So that's a, I guess, a, a map going forward. I think that would be helpful, um, to, um, to help keep people informed. The reality is that it's tough to sit down and read a thirty-page document or, or pay attention to a whole meeting if we can get those videos out. And I wanna thank Kim for setting all that up, that was great. And very, very big thanks to, uh, to Chris Williams.
Yep.
What you didn't see on the video was all of the, the cutting and, and getting rid of my ums and ahs and, you know, mid-sentence to make it short and, and, and really presentable. He, you know, he had to, uh, you know, splice in all of the, the shots to the, to the diagrams and documents during the video. There's a lot of work that went into that, so I wanna thank Chris a lot for that. And really, I think it was his sort of idea, you know, to, in the first place.
And, uh, Chris Andruski and Jason Carey too.
Yep.
When I went to meet with them about newsletter stuff, so thanks to them as well.
And it was, it was a lot of positive feedback, so.
It was pos, and a lot of people saw it and were gonna continue it.
We had the numbers, I, but I don't remember.
Three hundred and something, I believe.
Views and.
Yeah.
So you can keep track of that by seeing how many times people, I guess, open and, or whatever. Um, and I didn't keep opening it up just to jack up the numbers, but I think I watched it once. So, just, all right, so, um, just some follow-up to the, to the vote. There were, uh, several, uh, school-related war articles. One of them has to do with a land swap. Uh, the piece of land directly behind the school in exchange for a piece of, uh, wetland. So we're gonna move forward. We can move forward in drafting up those documents right now and, 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 um, and get that all signed up here over the next weeks. The other part, uh, the McGrath property, which is the property with a for-sale sign on, on, on one fifty-two, we can't officially close on that property until the new budget season, uh, which is what date, Mike, is it?
Uh, I think the purchase and sale says on it before July fifteenth.
Okay.
But the new, the new fiscal year starts July first.
Right, and so we have to wait until then to, to actually close on it. In the interim, we have a, we're in the midst of a ninety-day, uh, due diligence window to conduct our inspections and, uh, you know, environmental and, and all of that, and that's ongoing, so. I suspect that'll be wrapped up before too long.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll, we'll have that all done. Um, and of course, um, the, the Article Eight was the, uh, the up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, you know, architectural and, and consultants, um, cost estimators, uh, for the work we're gonna do between now and, and next March. And that's really appreciated. I think that's, it's gonna really help us move this along and, um, again, though, however, that doesn't, just so people know, that doesn't officially come, become available until July first. And then, um, of course, the, uh, board will do its duty to oversee that and make sure it's spent wisely. So that's that. The other thing is an update on the ed specs. I want to, um, start out by thanking, uh, again, Chris Andruski, uh, over the past couple of weeks. With my sort of prodding and pushing has really done a great job to, um, edit the, uh, junior-senior high school version of the ed specs. And what I mean is we have a comment section, okay? So for each space that's there, um, my charge to Chris was, you know, explain this so somebody uh, who goes down to the Bean or, or over to the Polish Club can pick it up, who has no, knows nothing about this issue at all, can, can read it and understand it. And, uh, it's, it's, um, it's a, it's an art to do that, cause you don't wanna overload people with unnecessary detail and information, but you wanna give them enough. And, and I think we're very, very close to being there. It took a lot of work. But I think it's hugely important, um, that, you know, people be able to understand, uh, and be able to buy into what, what we'd be proposing. So, uh, with that said, um, I think Sean Pine is meeting tomorrow with somebody from, uh, with the, somebody from Banwell, the architect, to, uh, go over the elementary version the same way. And I don't suspect that will be as, as involved as the junior high version. It's just not as much needed or going on down there, so, uh, there are, there are several things, however, that, that need, need addressing at the elementary. So, um, those will be done, I suspect, probably by the end of next week. I mean, far enough along, so we can meet as a board collectively with the, uh, Facilities Committee. Uh, we'd like to have Dr. Joyce there. I think he's expressed an interest in being there in case we have any questions. We'll have Ingrid, uh, and her team there, uh, from, from Banwell Architects. And ideally, we'd like to have, uh, Amy Clark there from the D O E. She oversees the facility building program, so we can get together and sort of ask all of our questions that we might want. I think it's important that the board and the Facilities Committee have these documents at least a week in advance so they can, you know, formulate their questions. And ideally, I'll be sort of reaching out to everybody to, to field questions, so we can make the most efficient use of that meeting. You know, so, um, um, what I, what I'd like to do, um, I, I'm asking for input here in terms of scheduling. I don't think, uh, it's gonna involve a lot of moving parts to get everybody there, but I just wanna get a sense from the board, you know, what may be a, a good time. I'm, I'm thinking sort of a, from a six to eight timeframe, uh, on a weeknight, maybe, maybe a Tuesday or a Wednesday. If that, if.
How, how soon is that gonna occur?
I'd give us a, I want you to have them at least a week, so I'd, I'd say probably something in the first, um, what's today, the fourteenth, probably something.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, in the first week or two of April.
Perfect.
Right around there.
Good.
Yeah. And the idea would be to, you know, to go through these. Um, if, if we have follow-up questions, so be it, but I'd like to get them to enough in advance so everybody can take a look. And maybe if we have questions, I can, kinda like we did with, with, um, Randy Bell, you know, we, we got him questions in advance, so he's not taking all the time here having to think through and look up stuff. He has a little time in advance. I like to do something similar.
Yeah, that kind of idea.
You know?
That'd be great.
You don't wanna have redundancy.
That makes an efficient meeting, yeah. We don't wanna, we don't wanna have a lot of, okay, I'll get back to you on that type of stuff. We wanna be able to answer it right there. So, uh, that's the idea, so, um, I'll get back in touch with everybody once I find when Ingrid and, and Dr. Joyce and So that's the idea, so I'll get back in touch with everybody once I find when Ingrid and Dr. Joyce and Amy Clark are available, so we can set that up. I think that's the best way to do it, do it with everybody, then we don't have to go through these things twice.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And then I wonder if we do another video that discusses that, yeah?
I think we absolutely should do another video. And that meeting will be, that meeting that we'll have will be on Channel 13 as well. We'll definitely have that up so people can watch it. But if they don't want the two-hour version, I agree, we can do a summary.
Okay. I think that's a great idea.
That's all I have on facilities.
All right, communications?
The plan going forward is that the newsletter's gonna go out the Wednesday, the week after our meeting. So we'll have two meetings a month and two newsletters a month. I've asked for some input from some of the staff members. I need to follow up on that, so that'll start next Wednesday.
And then if, say, like the penny sale, things like that.
That's gonna be...
Are they gonna send it to you, or how will we get that information?
I think we need, I think I need to work with Pat to figure out how we're gonna do that and what's the best way to funnel it. You know, maybe if I can get a template, if I work in the next month or so to get a template so it's easy to do, and then Jason can submit it for us. So we'll get it done.
Beautiful. All right, and the principal search. I don't have any information on that. All right, thank you. So the 26th, we placed a job ad. Now we're looking at application deadline. Application will be reviewed by executive secretary to the superintendent, March 18th, so that'll be tomorrow. And then Monday, March 30, 21st, through the 23rd, committee members review resumes. So now we're just trying to finalize the committee?
What are you reading from?
I am reading from the principal search process and timeline.
Which is...
I didn't have one either.
I just got it, because I was asked to serve on the committee.
Yes, she's got it. So basically, we're putting the committee together. I know students were asked, you were asked.
Yes.
Why don't we send one out, a copy out tomorrow?
Okay. And then the March 23rd, search committee meets at 6:30 PM to start looking at the candidates. So that's, we'll leave it at that.
What date's that?
March 23rd.
Okay, so next week.
And then they'll start doing the interviews, and we will be visiting their schools, site visits, which is, I think is important. We did that when we did, looked for the elementary principal.
Just to make a comment, and this is for the search committee and it's for everybody involved in it. There is the possibility that as these resumes or these applications come in, that that group doesn't see enough viable candidates to move forward. And I want, I think we would all support the fact that if there is not a viable pool, this is not a matter of selecting from a poor pool. We're very willing to do whatever is necessary to dig deeper.
We're lucky, though, we're in the good season, we're in the good part. We did manage to get, hopefully, we'll get a really good pool, but I think we're in the transition part where people who are looking are actively looking.
I think that's right, but again, this is a quality search.
Absolutely, absolutely.
This is not a quantity search. And if we have 24 applications of which there aren't three or four superstars, then we're not doing the right thing. Just like we did in the superintendent search.
And I think that, you know, given the momentum that we got from the superintendent search, I think we are still all on that wave and will continue to have that high level of selection for this next move, serving on the committee, that's my goal.
Yeah, people want to be part of this community. That's what we learned.
We're doing some great things, and we need to have the players on the team moving forward that'll help us the best way possible. So we will happen that way.
Thanks.
So then we have the joint board council meeting. Al's part of that, and we just asked Kim to be part of that.
Yes, indeed.
So then you two need to meet and discuss times and
Well...
what you're going, how you're going to go forward with this, correct?
Well, I think the town council and the board need to, this is not a school board represent...
No, you need to, you guys need to figure out when this is gonna happen, correct? You two, that's what this is about, the committee?
Yes, but I think we need some input from the town council so that they understand what we're doing. The communication has been made with the town council. I don't know how that happens.
I think Nathan is gonna get, from what I believe, that he's gonna get in contact with Phil Nazaro again to earmark counterparts for us on this subcommittee.
Right.
And then, once we meet and get some guidelines and a process in place, then the two, and agenda items to be discussed, the two groups will be collectively at a later date. Is that...
That's the way I have it, so.
Me, too, but we've made no progress, is my point.
But we did today. We're moving forward. And I unfortunately didn't attend the SST meeting, but Pat went for me. And we have some interesting stuff going, because again, we don't get to hear much about SST and how it's an important part of our school. So there are two students, Kira Franklin and Exaria Williams. They have exhibiting artwork at the Town Hall in Exeter, New Hampshire. Currently, 28 college courses are being offered as dual enrollment. An additional two will be added for biotech. That's a new program they just started, so, which is great. That goes towards college costs for parents, or for the students, actually. National Technical Honor Society will happen on Monday, April 4th at 9:45. Mr. Andruski, Mrs. Valentine, and Mr. Pavlidis will represent New Market Administration at that event. Last year, we had three students there. And SST will also have, they have a new assistant principal. Pamela Carr from Oyster River School District will be the new assistant principal, because she found she needed, Margaret had a very large workload, so they allowed her to get an assistant principal this year.
That's, that whole program is such a great opportunity for students, for college readiness and for life preparedness. It's an amazing opportunity, the stuff that goes on over there.
One of our teachers, Don Russell, is over there doing teacher... Yeah, early childhood development, and again, college courses, biotech, welding is one of the most popular.
Aquaculture.
Aquaculture. It's, I encourage you to, I mean, it's so hard because we have so many meetings, but I will let, I'm gonna start letting you guys know what's going on over there so we can go...
You know, it might not be a bad idea to someday take a tour over there. I did it as part of a, there was a, there's a leadership CCOs program, where people get together and do various leadership things. One of the things you do is you go up and fly in one of the refueling aircraft with the National Guard, and you ride around with police for nine. And one of them was going to the SST. It's pretty amazing, you know, what they've done. And I wasn't kidding about the aquaculture. They were growing tilapia. Pretty neat. And, you know, everything from that to, you know, house framing to...
I like, I wanted for the last two years to get Margaret here, just to even let us know a little bit more about it. Just, again, time crunches. We haven't been able to get her, get her there. Okay, so now we're going to look at policies. We have a couple of first reads. The first one is student discipline out of school actions. Make sure that was the first one. The board recognizes that out of school and off-campus student conduct is not normally the concern of the board. However, the board also recognizes that some out-of-school and off-campus conduct may have an adverse effect upon the school, school property, and school staff. Therefore, it shall be the policy of this board that the board or school administrators may impose disciplinary measures against students for some out-of-school or off-campus conduct. Discipline may be imposed if a principal's opinion, such as out-of-school conduct, causes a significant disruption or substantial interference with the school's educational mission, purpose, or objectives. Additionally, any off-campus or out-of-school behavior that has a strong potential to disrupt normal school operations may also be met with appropriate disciplinary actions by the board or school administrators. Out-of-school and off-campus student conduct that may subject a student to discipline includes, but is not limited to, damaging school property, violence at or near the school's bus stop, either before or after the school day, drinking alcohol, using tobacco products, or using illegal drugs at or near the school bus stop, either before or after school day, damaging the private property of school staff or employees, any other activity the board or administration determines impedes the general welfare of scholastic activities. Then we go into cyberbullying and internet threats. Reports and allegations of cyberbullying will be addressed in accordance with the provisions of Board Policy JICK. And the new part is, consistent with applicable law, the district will not require or request that a student disclose or provide to the district the student's user's name, password, or other authenticating information to a student's personal social media account. However, the district may request to a student or student's parent guardian that the student voluntarily share printed copies of specific information from a student's personal social media account if such information is relative to an ongoing district investigation. So that's the first read of that one. Do I need to read them all out loud? Oh, thank the good Lord. All right, the next one is JICK, Public Safety and Violence Prevention. And then at C...
Can I just ask a general question? I mean, this is our, sort of Al and I are completing our first loop here, our first orbit of school, of the school board. Do these come out, like, this time every year from the, from the...
It's usually year-round. It's part of the school board. You do policy. So we just kind of, what happens is the National School Board sends them to us to look at them, revise them, review them.
Different other time.
There's really two things you're trying to do with those, is that after the legislative session, the National School Boards Association will provide you with some model policies that are required by laws or some action legislatively. Secondly, you try to review them on an ongoing basis so that, I've worked, been in a place where the last time a policy was reviewed was over 10 years ago, and I think you're trying to refresh it. Even if you don't make a change to it, that's in the notes at the bottom on the left, the last time it was read and revised. And so I think we're trying to do two things. We're not trying to let, get away from this. Before you came on the board, we actually hired the School Boards Association to read our policy manual. And Barrett Christina, attorney for that, read it, and it was a low fee, and he just marked it up, and we've got that information. So probably we'll have, probably we're trying to, I think we were 50 or 60 policies behind at one point with all the new additions and the revise and all of that. We're trying to catch up.
So Barrett marked it up. Did we take action on that? Was it adopted in whole and part or...
We're bringing it along with these.
I see.
Yep.
Okay. What is the, we've got 16 or 18 pages of policy to read, which is a bit much. What is the requirement for us in terms of policy change? Do we, are we required by policy to read all 18 pages?
I would have to go back and look specifically at what your policy on adopting policy is. But I do know, in that policy, you have a first read and a second read.
No, I understand that, but my question is whether this is, my preference would be, as a board member, to understand the generic, and get an overview of the policy and what the changes are. Because we're gonna be here for another 45 minutes reading this, and that doesn't make...
Yeah, I'm not gonna, thank goodness I don't have to read it out loud. I thought I did.
Now, are the changes in bold?
Yes.
So the first read is not a literal reading of the policy. It is that people have read and they bring back their questions and change it. Sometimes Nathan is in charge of the policy committee, and so we're a little bit handicapped because he isn't here to explain his...
So they present it initially, Mike, and then no votes taken on, and then between this meeting and next, you have a chance to read them, I guess?
Right.
And form any questions or...
Or you could defer it to Nathan.
But we, we need to clarify, I guess, and just ask whether these actually literally need to be read.
Right.
No, no.
They do not.
I thought you just said they did.
No, I'm sorry. I said they do not have to be read. The first reading is more of a statement saying that you're not reading the policy. We've got 17 or 18-page policies. You're looking at the policy, looking at the changes, and asking questions.
Okay, I guess the question I'd like to know is, from now on, when there are first readings, what does that mean?
Okay.
And if it, it shouldn't be that if a policy's two pages long, you have to read it, but if it's 18, you don't. I'm hopeful that the answer is you don't have to. And if that's the case, I'd like to see an executive summary of the policy and its changes.
I'm going to say, since I've been doing this for a while, I've always read them and asked any questions. The first reading, I usually just kind of look at the bold, and then if I look at them again, so for the next meeting, I have any questions.
I think the term first reading is more like first presentation, first time around.
All right.
Yeah.
So if the policy is that, just so, again, so I understand, when there's a policy, it's not necessary for us to read that policy
That's correct.
in public.
Right.
That's correct.
Gotcha. Nathan has normally given us, the last couple times, sort of a synopsis of it, and then highlighted the differences, because he's on that committee, and he has, so I think that's what's missing.
Thank the, thank the Lord.
So the next one's school district social media websites, policy KD.
That's all new.
All new.
It says at the top, it's all bolded, too.
Yeah.
The bold, I think, is the new.
Yep.
Yeah, all new.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Because all the social media is all new.
It's all new.
So then the next one will be policy KDR, school district social media websites regulations, again, all new. So that's that.
So next time around, we'll, those will be up for... Yeah.
And I think, I think you're looking for some summary about the, about the policy, executive summary, I think Al, was Al's term. And we'll work on that.
Right, and then we have some personnel matters. We have a resignation from Ms. Amanda Perkins. I need a motion to accept it.
Shall I move it second?
All right, and then we have something exciting to talk about. Oh, we need to take a vote. Everybody's...
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Then we have the NECP award grants. We heard about one of them already. So everybody knows it's New Market Community Education Partnership. We had the big dinner back in October, September?
October.
October.
New market eats.
So we get to see, they announced the grants awarded February 2016. The teachers have been notified and a check enclosed for the total amount of $5,560.19. Should we read all these out loud? Who received them? I think so.
Sure.
So money went to eighth grade Philadelphia trip. Fourth grade homework club, they needed money for snacks. They had a speaker coming for Ms. Rhodey. The Poli is receiving iPad minis, and she teaches fourth grade. Fourth grade?
Yes.
Fourth, thank you. And Ryan Levaser, tech workshop at UNH. Christina Cochran, sensory input equipment, special ed. Erin Grooby is receiving an iPad. Jen King, third grade tech exploration. Is that a group, or what is that, what is tech exploration? We should find out.
I believe it's a software program. I think it's they're all going to use, but she was the one who wrote the grant that we get the money for.
Thank you. And Delaney Garino, Dominican Republic trip. That was great. We thank NECP.
It's amazing what these townspeople do to help our schools out, so we're great.
Just all the technology that they've provided, which has been great. All right, and then we go on to the approval of minutes. And we're looking for the approval for the March 3rd meeting.
Make a motion to approve the New Market School Board meeting for March 3, 2016.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then, I'll read the manifest, Mike.
Sure. Make a motion to approve the total of all manifests in the amount of $432,908.07.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lovely. That concludes our school board meeting. We will be going into non-public for our... for RSA ninety-one dash A, semi-colon, three, two AE, review of nominations for certified staff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it needs a motion.
We need a motion to go into non-public.
And a roll call vote.
Thank you.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we'll go for a roll call vote?
I don't vote.
No, you can do the roll call vote, right?
Do you have the form, because you need it?
Yeah, she takes it.
Where's the form?
It's in Nate's packet, because it's not AFE. You have to specifically say for personnel matters.
I'll clean it for you, Elizabeth.
Usually on the left.
Yep, right here.
And then on the back, it'll tell you which one, I think, to give.
Hey, thanks for a great presentation.
Thank you.
I'll do, I'll do a little more homework next time, so I can understand it better.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Right, so which one am I doing? The dismissal promotion, it's promotion, correct? RSA.
Well, I don't know what you're, I don't know what you're going in for.
Nomination.
And he's excited and passionate, and I, I bet he does a good job with the students and...
I think it's the one that we said.
So you had it right.
Just a reminder, we're still on.
Because we, I have to announce what it is anyway, so...
Yeah, you have to just announce that it's...
All right, so it is for RSA ninety-one dash A, three. The dismissal, promotion, compensation of any public employee. Thank you.
And which sub, which subsection is that?
Denied.
Which one?
We have the roll call vote now.
It's the first one checked, Michael.
Okay. All right, so I'll, let me remake that motion. Motion to go non-public pursuant to RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, Roman two, small a, dismissal of promotion, compensation of any public employee.
Second.
So moved. So then we do a roll call.
You're all in favor?
We have to do a roll call.
All in favor?
Mr. Zane?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
Mr. Kennison?
Aye.
All right.
Ms. McKinney?
Aye.
All right.
Good, we're all set.
We are in non-public.
We're still on.
Set.